All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna call this city council meeting for the afternoon of August 27th to order. Welcome, great to have a full chamber. Hello Danny, you're gonna have to quiet down over there. And who is this Ranger? Who is this Ranger? Hi Ranger.
Bandit.
Bandit. Got it, hey Bandit, welcome. I'm much more familiar with Danny the Dragon, sorry, but you're both welcome. Did I get a boo for that? Sorry. Okay, so it's just, my kids love Happy Hollow. Okay, so welcome, everyone. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez, Torres, Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelaus.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
Present.
Kamay.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Yevakorm.
Great, thank you. Now if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be given by Tong Fong Silicon Valley Institute, who will be giving a Taekwondo presentation, and Councilmember Dwan will tell us more.
Good afternoon, everyone, thank you Mayor. I am excited to present Tong Fong Martial Arts Institute for my final invocation in the month of August. Tong Fong Martial Arts Institute has emphasized excellence in the practice of traditional martial arts. Their school instilled maturity, discipline, balance, and strength in their students, thus fostering a strong sense of community and cultural identity while advocating for the importance of physical and mental well-being. Without further ado, please start your performance.
Put it back! Bow! Alright, second form. Attention! Ready! Move! Hey! 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 Move! Hey!
Yah!
Bow! So... Bow! Attention! Salute! Ta-da-dah! Attention! Salute! Alright, you guys spread out a little bit more. Okay, long hat, gara. Ready! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move!
Yah!
Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move!
Yah!
Hey! Move! 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 Hey! Move!
Yah!
Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move!
Yah!
Hey! Move! 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 Hey! Move!
Yah!
Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move! Hey! Move!
Yah!
Hey! Alright, bow! Attention! Bow! Alright.
(applause)
One straight line. Hurry up, hurry up. Two lines. Okay, two lines. Come on. Come on, hurry up. No.
Yah!
(applause) That hurts my tongue.
Yah!
Alright.
Yah!
Come on, okay. There you go.
I'm done. Yah!
Right on. Kick him out, bud.
Can't drink when you're drunk.
Come on. I got it. Come on, quick. Yes, sir. Hurry up. I think they get nervous more than I. Face hop! Attention! Bow! Put it back! Attention! Bow! Alright, thank you. (applause)
Thank you so much, really, really enjoyed that, and keep up the good work, guys, very talented.[424.12][424.12](applause) Great way to start off the meeting. All right, we have a couple of ceremonial items, I'll invite Councilmember Ortiz to join me at the podium, and we will recognize Reverend Cristobal Doña.
Thank you for being here. Yes, please, line up like that. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Today we are honoring a religious leader who has made a permanent mark on the history of East San Jose. When Cristobal Doña came to the United States from Nicaragua in 1954, at the age of 24, he had a wife, four children, and a fifth grade education. Working long hours at night and classes during the day, Cristobal earned an education and enrolled at San Jose State, studying Spanish. At the same time, he became a pastor at a small Baptist church in East San Jose, primarily serving fellow immigrant members in, from Latin America. After attaining a master degree in Religious Education from Golden Gate Baptist Seminary, Cristobal began working as a substitute teacher for the Alum Rock Unified School District as he continued to tend to his congregation. That congregation quickly outgrew its initial meager home, and in 1976 Reverend Doña launched White Road Baptist Church, the flagship church of Spanish-speaking Baptist churches in California. Reflecting Reverend Doña's passion for education, White Road Baptist became known for its thriving youth ministry, which provided mentorship to many young Latinos who would go on to become community leaders in San Jose and beyond. Reverend Doña's sincere commitment to his neighbors and particularly fellow immigrants has made White Road Baptist Church a community pillar in East San Jose, and it's my honor alongside the mayor to present this commendation of his accomplishments received on his behalf by his family. Before we present the commendation, I'd now like to invite his son to please say a few words on his behalf.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan and City Council members, especially Councilman Peter Ortiz. Greetings on behalf of my dad. Pastor Cristobal Doña and the Doña family, all 11 of us, plus 44 grandchildren and 40 great, 44 great-grandchildren and two great-great-grandchildren. We would like to thank you for this kind gesture of recognition for my dad's life of service. At this time, he is weakened, not just by his age of 97, but also by medical conditions that make it impossible for him to be present. However, he is aware and understands the good faith and intentions of this proclamation. We are grateful and view it as confirmation of what St. Paul wrote to the church in Rome, where he says, "For rulers, that's all of you. Make..." The councilmembers, "Hold no terror for those who do right, but for those who do wrong. Do you want to be free from fear of the one in authority? Then do what is right, and he will commend you. For he, the government, is God's servant," as found in Romans. Pastor Doña would be the first to tell you that although this recognition is appreciated, all praise and glory for any recognition of his service to the community goes to our Lord Jesus Christ. Once again, thank you for this opportunity to give honor to whom honor is due, and for giving us the opportunity to express our appreciation for this proclamation. Thank you very much.[649.23][649.23](applause)
Councilmember Ortiz and the entire council is really pleased to honor your father. Thank you for his service and the whole family's contributions to the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a honor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for coming in. Nice to see you.
Take a picture. Should we get a big group photo? (inaudible). Alright, now I'd like to invite Councilmember Davis down, and I'll just intro this as she comes over by saying, "Every July, the National Recreation and Parks Association honors and acknowledges parks and recreation departments across the nation for providing essential services and quality programs to the community." Now, it's no longer July, obviously, we're in August, but it's a great time to reflect back on this summer and the entire past year and recognize our Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services Department for the incredible work they do in our community. With that, I'm pleased to hand things over to Councilmember Davis. Yeah, come on down, everybody.
Come on down, PRNS.
Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon. As the mayor said, today we recognize and celebrate the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services. As the Chair of the Neighborhood Services and Education Committee and the liaison to the Parks and Recreation Committee, I have worked closely with this team and can confidently say they are central to our community's well-being and vibrancy. PRNS manages over 200 parks, 46 community centers, and almost 65 miles of trails. This past fiscal year, they responded to 171 park concerns from the public and organized 1,428 hours of volunteer work to enhance our parks and trails. They have one of the most comprehensive service models of any parks and recreation agency in the nation, and they believe in building community through fun. Their efforts are integral to maintaining the quality and accessibility of our community spaces. And because it's my last year and the last time I get to do this, I want to do a special shout-out to all of the PRNS staff who maintain the parks in District 6 and put up with my many texts when I'm walking the dogs and at parks events on the weekends. Earlier this month, we collaborated to rededicate the Guadalupe River Park Trails status as part of the National Trail System, along with Mayor Mahan and Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren. This rededication ceremony highlighted not only the Guadalupe River Park Trail, but all of our trails as valuable assets in our city, and reminded us that walking, biking, and enjoying nature are among the best ways to enhance our quality of life. So get outdoors and visit one of the many, many parks in our city, or check out a community center to see all of the good work PRNS is doing. And now I invite John Sisarelli, the Director of PRNS, to accept this commendation and say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember.[847.88][847.88](applause) So where we belong, just like the Councilmember said, you know, outdoor nature, parks, trails, biking, walking, taking care of yourself, being part of the community, that's what we're all about in this department. And these are just a few of the people that make that happen. This summer, there were hundreds and hundreds of people working at our department to make for a great summer for our youth, where we served almost 10,000 youth across the city across our various programs. We issued $2,400 in scholarships for families, so that that would be free to them, over a half a million dollars in scholarships just for our summer programs. 21,000 meals for seniors during the summer, 26 Viva Park activations across the city and neighborhoods to build community. This is the group that delivers. And, you know, we have a friendly competition with the library, of course, that's natural. I will say, though, Jill, the gauntlet has been thrown, we have two mascots.[912.01][912.01](laughing) So, we'll see what your next commendation looks like in the library. truly are, in so many ways, the human face of our city. Chances are, when a resident has an interaction with City Hall, it's often through you, through your hands. You're directly serving our residents. And yes, that's true of our library and police and fire. But all the time, when I'm out in the community, I see PR&amp;S staff out there serving our community. So I just want to say, along with Councilor Davis and the entire council, how proud of this department we are. And we're really grateful to you for the exemplary service you provide to our community every day. Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're amazing.
How are you? Yeah, good. Good to see you as well. Thank you, guys, for what you do. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right. We are on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have changes to the printed agenda? And I believe Councilor Davis had one. Go ahead, council member.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to defer item 3.6 for two weeks for further review, given the communication we received by, from the city attorney and the letters that we received from two of our congresswomen. So I'd like to move-
Is there a second? Or sorry, was that a motion?
Yeah, so that's a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, great. Thank you both. I don't see any other hands. So, Tony, let's take public comment, and then we'll vote on orders of the day, and then proceed to adjournment.
I have no cards.
No cards. Back to the council. Let's vote on the motion.
One second. The people who are from the tribe are here. I think they're a little confused that they're supposed to speak at this item. This is your guys' item.
Okay.
I do have cards for 3.6. Do you want me to call everybody who's-
Yeah, why don't we do this if it's okay with the council, and Nora doesn't tell me that I'm violating any important parliamentary procedures? I'd like to actually take the adjournment first. Let's do that. And then we will go ahead and take public comment on the motion under orders of the day. Is that okay? Okay. So we're going to proceed to the adjournment, just so that the Orozco family can get on with their day. And then we'll come back to Councilor Davis's motion. Today's meeting will be adjourned in honor of Karina Orozco. And it's with a heavy heart that we say goodbye to a beloved daughter, sister, wife, and mother, and much-loved member of our Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services Department, who sadly passed away in May of this year. In her 18 years with PR&amp;S, Karina made a lasting impression in the lives of her friends, her colleagues, and the community, and lived by her mantra, "Don't talk about it, be about it." She championed initiatives that made sure our parks and recreation programs were accessible to everyone, especially our underserved youth and their families. And our city is a better place because of her. In addition to Karina's family and colleagues from PR&amp;S, we are also joined by her family here today. Our Director of Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services, John Sisarelli, is here, as you all know, and he will share a few comments on the tremendous impact that Karina had. And Karina's husband, Mike, is also here to share his remarks. As they come up to the podium, I'm going to also invite our city manager, Jennifer McGuire, to share a few remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I mean, the mayor covered a lot. To the family, the friends and colleagues, and everyone else who loved Karina, my heart, along with everybody in our city family, goes out to you. And we're very, very sincerely sad for the loss of her. She was a wonderful city employee, and she just had a lasting impact on everyone that she served. Words cannot describe how sorry I am for this loss. And I want you all to know that, to please accept my sincere and heartfelt condolences. And with that, I'll turn it over to John Sisarelli. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. As the director, you know, I can say that we were privileged to work alongside Karina. She was part of our Parks and Rec family, and that's how we try to treat each other. You'll notice that after the commendation, nobody left. They're here for her. You know, Karina's motto, "Don't talk about it, be about it," reflected her commitment to action, and it will continue to inspire us to make a real impact. I do want to highlight one of her contributions, as it really does underscore her dedication and her character. She was integral in securing a three-year, million-dollar outdoor equity grant that some of you are familiar with, that enabled over 300 underserved youth and their families to enjoy family camp in Yosemite at no cost to them, from underserved areas of the city. This is a testament to her desire to serve our community and enrich lives. As we remember her today, let's honor her by embracing her spirit of service and striving to make a meaningful difference in all that we do and be about it. I'd like to acknowledge Karina's loving family members who are here with us today, including her husband, Mike Owen, their young son, and her parents, Rose and Eric Vigor, and many other staff members who are here that worked alongside her all those years and got to know her so well. And I'll ask her husband, Mike, and the family to come up and speak.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for honoring and recognizing Karina and her accomplishments. While today is bittersweet, it really shows how much of an impact she had on us and our community. Whether she was mentoring our youth or creating programs for them, she did it with a heart of passion and devotion. Karina was very driven and motivated. Some would say she was stubborn, but this, I believe, allowed her to accomplish projects and goals that some would say are too hard or not possible. Karina made a lot of friends in the city during her time. There are some that are here supporting her to this very day, and I would like to acknowledge and thank them. I also would like to acknowledge and thank her mentors. She would always mention how much of an influence they had on her and her growth as a woman. We are motivated and uplifted by everyone so much early in our lives, as infants and children, to walk, to read, to say our first word. Then, on our journey to adulthood, we are often discouraged, dissuaded, to pursue dreams and beliefs some might find unattainable, unfeasible, or impossible. Karina believed if we continued encouraging and motivating our youth, like we did when they were infants, that they would accomplish so much more as individuals and as a society. To close, I would like to share what Karina believed in and told me and a lot of her youth. You can accomplish and be anything you want to be, as long as you work hard and be kind to others. Thank you all.
Mike, thank you for those beautiful words. And we just want you to know how heartbroken we are for you and your family. We're glad to see you surrounded by so much loving family. And clearly, Karina's had a huge impact. We've got entire Parks Department here, inspired by her work. And her memory and her legacy is going to continue on through the work we do that ripples out and touches thousands and thousands of families in our city. Thank you for being here today. And again, we're very sorry for your loss. That's right. And I apologize. Karina's family asked if the council would gather to take a group photo here. So I think if we can just maybe gather together, and John, if you want to join us. I don't know if you want to take the photo there in front of the podium, whatever you prefer, but we'll come down. All right. We are still on orders of the day, and we have a motion. Councilmember Davis seconded, I believe, by Councilwoman Cohen, which is to defer item 3.6 for two weeks. And we will, thank you to everyone in our PR&amp;S department. We will take public comment for anyone. Tony, how do you want to handle this? I'll let you take over. Go ahead.
So I have four cards for item 3.6. I'm going to call you up, but this is to talk about the deferral only, not the actual item. This is to talk about whether or not you agree with the deferral. I have Cynthia, Karina, Alfonso, and I have an anonymous card. So if any of the four of you want to come down and talk to the deferral, please come on down.
Great. So we had a few names. You can just come on down. Whoever's first can speak. You'll have up to two minutes. And the vote before the council, the motion, is it on a two-week deferral? Please keep your comments to that decision. Thank you. Welcome.
Hoshatui, Kanak Cynthia. I would like to read a statement on behalf of tribal chairman Charlene Nishma, who could not be here today because she is traveling to Washington, DC to raise awareness for our tribe's struggle and demand corrective action of Congress administration. Dear council members, it is a sad day when you come to the realization that members of Congress will choose politics and money over justice and troop. Muekma has no issue with our evidence that is made clear by all support we have from the academics who have spent decades studying our history and evidence. Rep. Zoe Lofgren and Ann Esho have made false accusations regarding our status, our evidence, and path available to us for restoring our status. I have already submitted a point-by-point review to claim, so I won't waste your time repeating the points here. But I hope you spend the time to read what I submitted carefully. The ironic part is that they both agreed by sponsoring legislation to restore our status as long as we agreed to give up our gaming rights. Therefore, it is not about respecting BIA's decision, as they claim. If they truly believe the BIA's process should be respected, then why did they both agree to recognize us without gaming rights? Why did Zoe Lofgren make the following statement to Congress in 2002, and I quote, "Having reviewed the tribe's petition, it appears to me that the tribe meets all the criteria to set by court as well as the BIA's acknowledgements criteria." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Kanak Raka, Karina Olowano. I'm speaking in behalf of Charlene Nishma with a statement. If Rep. Lofgren and Esho truly believe that Muekma does not meet the criteria to be considered a legitimate tribal nation, then why did they, then they should have never agreed to restore our status with or without gaming rights? The fact that they agreed to sponsor legislation albeit with restrictions means that they agree that we do meet the criteria. I've always said restoring our status is about acknowledging our sovereignty and not about gaming. Gaming is a right all federally recognized tribes enjoy under state and federal law. So why do these ladies think it's appropriate to overturn the will of California voters who voted overwhelmingly in two-state propositions to give this economic right to all tribes? We are not asking the city of San Jose to give us federal recognition. Only the federal government can do that. We are asking the city to stand by us and support in solidarity, to let the federal government know that the city that once tried to exterminate us now stands ready to reckon with its past and do what is right and just to support us. Rep. Zoe Lofgren and Rep. Anna Esho are playing politics with our existence. It's wrong and immoral, and I believe it will badly impact their political legacies. We urge you to vote in favor of advancing this resolution to the full council for a floor vote, because the community deserves to hear what each of you stand on this issue. We would like to correct some of the factual errors in the Mercury News reporting published online yesterday and in print this morning. Rep. Anna Esho wrongly asserts that the congressional legislation is the only path forward for the tribe's recognition efforts. In this article, the Mercury News repeats that assertion. This is untrue. There are three distinct pathways that the tribe is pursuing. Yes, the first is congressional legislation, because Congress has plenary authority over Indian affairs and its Congress proper role to recognize tribes. The second pathway forward is called administrative corrective action, which the tribe is also pursuing, and the matter is currently pending a decision from Assistant Secretary Byron Newland. The Secretary of the Assistant Secretary can acknowledge the Bureau of Indian Affairs erred in 1978 when it first drafted a list of recognized tribes and simply add Muekma to-
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'll just remind our speakers, the only decision before us today is whether or not to defer the item for two weeks. I'd appreciate if folks would focus on that in your comments.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Mayor. My name is Alfonso Salazar. Soon after my retirement from the US Postal Service back in 2021, I painted the mural honoring the Muekma Oloni Tribe along the Guadalupe River Walk here in downtown San Jose. It's a mural that, back in 2021, Mayor Sam Licardo used it as a backdrop to speak with everyone. And it was also featured in a commercial during a college basketball tournament. So, and I'm not sure if any of you have seen it, taking a walk down the Guadalupe River. But anyway, when I was asked to do the mural, they left it up to me to come up with an idea to dress the wall. And I thought about the people that were here before us, before this was the city of San Jose, before this was California. And at the time, during the pandemic, I couldn't visit the libraries to learn who was here. I admit, I didn't know anything about the tribe. And even when I did look up them on the internet, it wasn't enough. So I asked Juan Carlos from Empire Seven, who got me this wall to do, if I could meet up with the tribe. And it was then I met Charlene Nishma, the chairperson of the Muekma Oloni Tribe. She got me to learn all about them, and their journey, their history. It was a few meetings. It was worth a lot to me. It inspired me to create what I did. Part of my process to paint the mural was to watch and listen to this documentary that I also found on-
That's your time? I had one anonymous card.
Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to speak. I will provide an abbreviated comment, speaking to the deferment of agenda item 3.6. Part of the reason why I'm here today is to condemn the actions of Congresswoman Eshu and Congresswoman Lofgren, who have directed taxpayer-funded staffers to pressure city council members to drop their support of this resolution, likely in violation of the Hatch Act. Do not let their lies or their attempts to obfuscate the truth compel you. The Muekma Oloni Tribe deserve nothing less than all of their rights and protections bestowed upon federally recognized tribes, including gaming. I will close with the words of Chairwoman Nishma in response to Congresswoman Lofgren's letter to this council. My people said no. We've given up enough. We've given our land that was stolen from us, our language that was taken, and our culture, and we are not giving up anymore. This was a right that was given to us, and we want to exercise that if we choose to. Thank you.
Back to council. And before you begin discussion, two weeks out for us is September 10th, where we will have, we won't have a full council. So do we want to go out to, I said November, I meant September 10th. Do we want to go out to September 17th?
Sorry. Yes, let's come back to the maker of the motion. Is that something you'd like to do?
Sure, three weeks, yep.
Okay, Councilwoman Cohen, is that okay with you? Okay. All right. So the deferral would be for three weeks to accommodate the council schedule. We do have a couple of hands up, and we'll go first to Councilmember Ortiz. I'm sorry, sir. We don't have, we don't have any cards, and we're back to council deliberation. All right. Come on, come on down. Let's, if we can do it quickly, go ahead. That's going to be the last public comment, just for the record. Go ahead, sir.
Our tribal nations are sovereign, anchored in the strength and wisdom of our ancestors. We stand united without fear, for it is the people and the legacy of those who come before us that defend our ancestors. With their profound gifts of wisdom, have guided us through, guided us to cherish and protect our natural resources. This is not just a commodity, but a sacred gift meant to sustain our land, people for generations to come. We commit ourselves to truth and justice, recognizing the importance of history of our affairs past, present, and future as a single, united story. In this unity, we find the resolve to protect our lands, the courage to uphold our rights, and the clarity to honor the truth of our history, our past, our present, and the future. They're all woven together in a narrative of resilience and peace. We commit to walking this path with integrity, ensuring that the legacy of our ancestors remains a guiding light for generations to come. United we stand as guardians of our sovereignty, our people, and the sacred gifts of our ancestors. And I just want to say, I understand, and there's an opportunity. It's called the Community Change Grant, and it's a partnership, actually. And so I definitely would recommend you reaching out and learning more about it, because it's a way to make a difference in your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are back to the council, and we're starting with Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, thank you to my colleague for the motion. I just want to, first off, thank all of the members of the Brown Act for keeping an open mind and an open conversation of dialogue on how we can best serve our local indigenous community. I personally, you know, strongly believe that it's in our city's best interest to build trust and partnership with the Muekma Oloni Tribe. And I believe that the resolution would be a good first step. But I also want to say that it's not the only step and approach that we can take in order to make sure that we're supporting our local indigenous community. So even in three weeks, regardless of the outcome, I hope we can still continue to brainstorm on how to support our local community. But just in regards to the process, across the country, Congress has been able to act by granting federal recognition to tribes outside of the BIA process, oftentimes in response to affirmations from local and state governments, such as the resolution. But I also understand that new information keeps coming in, and that all my colleagues deserve a chance to review it and make an informed decision. So with that in mind, you know, I will support Councilmember Davis's deferral. And just, I just want to make sure on the record, because I know, before I was on the city council, I didn't know what a deferral means. It just means postponing it for a couple weeks. So we'll see this come back in three weeks. So thank you all. Thank you for the people who came and spoke. And thank you to my colleagues for taking this matter very serious.
Thanks, council member, and appreciate you clarifying that. For everyone, Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. I, thank you for the motion, Councilmember Davis, but I have a couple of questions. And one is, what additional information are you looking for to come back at by the 17th? And are you asking staff to do any further investigation? Or is it just, you want time to read the, our attorney's letter and think about it? I'm just wondering, what's, what will happen between now and the three weeks?
Yeah, no additional information is needed for direction, I guess I should say. But, but we, as a Brown Act, want some time to reflect on all of the information that we've received over the last week or so.
Okay. All right. Then I'm happy to support the motion. I was concerned about sending this back and ask- I was concerned about sending this back and asking staff to investigate more, because I know they're prepared to do, give us a 15-minute presentation today. So I'm concerned about their...
No additional requests.
Wonderful. Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, great. It looks like we are ready to vote. Tony?
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. All right, we are on to the closed session report. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Okay, thank you, Nora. Next is the consent calendar. Are there any items council would like to pull from the consent calendar? Or do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
I have no cards.
Okay, thank you. Coming back to the council, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you, Tony. Next is land use consent, item 10-1A, and I believe Councilor Dewan would like to pull it for a question or two.
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, council member.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I do have a question for staff regarding this.
Great. Do we have staff in the chamber who can answer Councilor Dewan's questions on 10.1A?
I think Chris Burton's coming.
I see Chris Burton coming down, perfect.
The first question is, are we not able to enhance the capability of these cell, curtain cell towers? Instead of placing more towers?
That's a, sorry, council member, Chris Burton, Director of Planning Building Code Enforcement. We looked at site alternatives analysis prepared by the applicant as part of the application that does take some of that sort of into consideration and deemed that an additional tower is necessary on this site. And I believe the applicants here, who might be more appropriate, to speak to the specifics of why they feel they need an additional tower.
Okay, hopefully you can elaborate on that. And then, what made the decision to have the tower in that particular location?
As relative to the site?
Yes, you know, toward the front versus setback to the, to the site.
So obviously, there's, the towers being added to an existing site, so there's a number of considerations that go into placement. From a staff perspective, we have city council policy on the placement, placement of telecommunications facilities like this. Typically, there's a minimum setback from residential uses, and then for taller poles, we consider one foot of linear distance for every foot of height on the pole. This pole is located approximately 64 feet away from the nearest residences, and it's a 55-foot pole. So it's considered sort of appropriate, because it's sort of further away than the requirement.
Was there consideration of the surrounding trees to make the pole look like the, the rest of the neighborhood versus, I believe we have a pine tree, right, right in the middle of San Jose?
Yeah, there's, so there's some limitations as far as sort of what we can do, and again, I would defer some of that to the applicant, as far as kind of what they can do with the sort of technology of the facilities that they have available. Typically, what we see is sort of this type, which is a monopole that is, you know, made to look like a tree, and there's a limit to what they can do. Or we see something that's just the sort of straight pole, something more like what we would call a slimline monopole. So we do tend to see sort of different applications. There is a limit to how much you can kind of make it look, you know, different from, from what's proposed.
There's a lot of residents who have concern about the radiation and the location of this particular monopole. I know that you have community meetings. Was that communicate pretty clearly that, from the data, there is, you know, there's no harm to the resident nearby?
Yeah, so, so we believe so. So we actually had this discussion, because this project went to planning commission two weeks ago, and the applicant has engaged a consultant that's provided additional information relative to that. Now, from the city's perspective, the Telecommunications Act of 1996 limits our ability to decline or deny telecommunications facilities based on our affirmations. So typically, it's not something that we take into consideration, because we are limited by federal law.
Well, my, my staff have communicate this data to the community and tried to ease their fears to no avail. Is there any other remedies to, to help the resident? I, I know, I believe you have one, community meetings, right, regarding this? Or is it multiple?
I believe there was, I'd have to go back and refer to my staff on that question. I don't have it in front of me. But it was at planning commission. I know that members of the neighborhood were at planning commission with us two weeks ago, and had, the applicant had their representatives there as well.
Yeah, I, the fear and concern with the, the community, so I, I, I'm not going to go support to build this monopole, and, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Thank you, Chris. Councilmember Ortiz.
So real quick, Chris, thank you so much for being down here. Thank you for taking our questions. And I understand, you know, our limitations based on federal law. Thank you for sharing that. That was information for me. But if, you know, when this goes through, is staff willing to meet with the group and have a conversation with them? Because planning commission isn't necessarily a meeting with the constituents, and essentially, we work for them, so I think we at least owe them a meaning to talk about the facts.
So, and I, I do have a little bit more information on that from my staff, council member, live. And so, you know, obviously, we always follow Council Policy 6-30 on public outreach for development permits and development projects, so we do have a council policy on this. Because of the size of the project, it wouldn't typically warrant a community meeting. However, we do put a sign on site, and we notice the public around before it gets to public hearing. On this one, we did not hear from the community until sort of, I think the notices went out on the planning commission hearing, and that's a couple of days before planning commission is when we first got notification that there was some concern.
Sorry to ask this question, Chris, but are you saying, are we only meeting with the community when we have to?
I wouldn't say when we have to. I think we have a council-adopted policy that gives us guidelines on when community meetings are appropriate. Now, in any development permit application, if there is community interest and we hear of it, then we will have a community meeting. But we don't, by standard, do a community meeting for every one of the 2,000 or so planning approvals we do every year.
I would say this constitutes people wanting to have a conversation.
It does, and that's why the policy lays out notification on site that allows people to see that there is a project occurring, and that we hope that people will contact us before they get that mailing through the, the, the sort of regular mail. It doesn't always happen, obviously, in instances like this, and we do try and provide as much information publicly as we can.
Appreciate that. I mean, and I understand you're doing your job, but personally, I feel like our community wants to meet as public servants, we should be willing to meet with them. But I appreciate the department's opinion.
And, council member, I will just say, we do have an open audit recommendation to continue looking at 6-30, so we are currently working on that, and so we'll bring back more updates to both Community and Economic Development Committee and ultimately City Council.
Thank you.
But, Chris, just, sorry, if I could just pick up on Councilmember Ortiz's question, I think he started with this question, I'm not sure we clarified. If the council office wants to convene city staff to meet with the community, you will do that?
That's correct.
In advance of the decision or after any decision taken today?
Yeah.
And you're happy to do that, I assume?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's clear. I mean, I think Councilor Ortiz makes a good point, I just want to make sure that often it is initiated by a council office on behalf of constituents. Not always, sometimes it's just community members coming to the department directly, but that's something you are available to do.
Yeah, absolutely. And we do, like I said, you know, city council has given us clear direction on when they think community meetings are appropriate.
I understand, we've got guidelines. I just want to clarify for the record, we understand the policy, we've got guidelines. I know you deal with a high volume of approvals. We do have concerned community members. I just want to, I just wanted to clarify that, to Councilmember Ortiz's point, we can have that meeting, you're happy to meet with the community, before the decision's made, if it's requested by the council office, or there's a group of constituents who reach out and/or after today if we make a decision on this.
Yep.
Okay, great, that's helpful. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, don't go away. You know, I had a similar situation of something that had already been, you know, previously approved before I got on council. And, you know, it really puts the council member in a very difficult position, because some of these cells are, or towers, or whatever they may be, are regulated by federal law. And so, you know, there's, as a, as a local person who wants to do right by the community, it's very, very difficult, because, you know, we can't just overturn federal law. I wrote a letter to the FCC to let them know that they need to revise their, their standards, because in fact, there may be new information on health effects and all of that. And I know that it's something that, you know, legally, we, we, we're not able to, to, to do a lot about, but I think that as representatives of the local community, we need to express our concerns and our community's concerns to the federal representatives. And I think, I think it's something that, that Palo Alto had some changes in, in some of the things that they're doing, and, you know, I was going to ask whether or not it might be possible to take a look at what they've done. It's something that was, that I had not known, but it was brought to my attention when my residents were, were concerned. But the permit had already been granted, and the work had already been started. So we were not in the right process. But if there's something that we can do, I think that I would rather, you know, try to see if there is anything that we can do, similar to what Palo Alto, the city of Palo Alto did, and, and be able to have a little bit of, of, you know, control in terms of what we may be able to do. Because this whole idea of, oh, there's nothing we could do, there's nothing, I think that there's always some kind of way to, you know, sort of like, express our concerns to the FCC. And I, I've done that. So, so can you look at that?
Was that a question?
Yes, yes, yes.
I wasn't clear on what the question is.
Okay, so we could certainly take a look at sort of any kind of recent changes by other municipalities to see sort of how they're looking at this, yeah.
That would be terrific. You know, I mean, I think, I think just, just knowing, you know, what other cities have done is, is very helpful, and, and certainly, if we're able to do something, I, I would appreciate that.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor. And I, I do see a few other hands have gone up, and maybe I can just turn to our city attorney, Nora, to, Nora, if you're able to, I know I'm asking you off the cuff here, but what are our, what obligations or kind, what considerations do we have in terms of federal law on this?
Thank you, Mayor. There's, there's been a lot of litigation by local entities trying to make some inroads, but the federal law is very clear, and, and they've pretty much preempted this entire area. Whether or not there can be more outreach or things like that is what I'm understanding people might be asking for, and we, we, my office is certainly happy to look at what other cities are doing, but the feds have been very clear that they own this arena.
Okay. And specifically, we are not able to reject a site based on concerns about things like emissions. Is that correct? I just want to make sure we're clear on what, or what latitude, if any, we do have.
That, yes, and the federal legislation specifically calls that out.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Nora. Let's continue. I want to get in a couple of new voices, and then we'll come back around to Councilor Dewan, Councilor Candelas? Or, I'm sorry, was it Cohen next? Either way, I'm sorry, Councilor Candelas, go ahead.
Either way, I'll paper, scissors, or rock for it. No, thank you, Mayor. I, I, I think as a follow-up to the questions you had, with regards to, you know, concerns for a, a community dialogue, Chris, what would you say? Let's say, council office doesn't make that request. I mean, according to the staff report, we received a petition against this project on the 12th of August. Here we are almost two, two weeks later, and, I mean, we didn't have a dialogue with the community to, to address their concerns if they submitted this petition?
So the petition was received at planning commission? So, yeah, there were no additional conversations that occurred with the community after that? I think at planning commission, the commissioners asked a number of questions, both of the representative from the community who presented that petition.
No, I, I read the staff, I read the staff memo, yeah, I saw that. But, but now, I, I, but now I, my question is, if we don't, if, you know, if I, if I was in the position of being the, the council member representing this area, I mean, how would, would staff proactively engage the council office to which this project is in to say, hey, this is what we heard? I mean, I know my staff monitors planning commission meetings, but is, is there, do we have a mechanism to which, where we are in communication with, with the, with the council office? Or is that part of the, the council policy evaluation that we're currently undergoing?
So I think typically, when we're, so we are in a two-week turnaround typically between planning commission and council. So unless one of our standing briefings falls in between that time, we wouldn't necessarily outreach outside of that. Because typically, we get that information at the planning commission hearing, and we forward it direct to the city council as part of the transmittal. So as part of that sort of formal notification, so there's nothing outside of that process.
Fair enough. Okay, all right. No, thank, thank you for those questions.
Thank you, council member. Councilor Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your comments. I'm not going to ask you a question. I don't know whether someone else will, so I'm not going to. I, you know, I just want to be, be careful about, about trying to make technical statements on this council without getting experts on the technical issues in here, and I've gone to many workshops and discussions with technical experts on the difference between 5G and 4G and the technology. We have some organizations here in this county that are really, really strong on this, and presumably, because this comes up regularly, we ought to potentially bring some of them in and talk to us, and so that we all understand the technology and the, and the potential risks, of which I understand are very low for cell towers. 5G dissipates faster than 4G, actually, because the higher rate, frequency it is, the quicker the dissipation. So a 4G tower will actually provide radiation further out, and the dissipation from a tower is, is very, very, is, is, is almost, is 100% by the time it gets into anyone's home. I will just point out that the Wi-Fi router in one's house actually gives off much worse radiation risks that are actually more damaging to people than a tower that's out in the public. So, re, holding the cellphone up to your head and using a Wi-Fi router in your house is the riskiest thing you can do as far as radiation, and these towers are not. And I think it's important for us to understand that, rather than, you know, draw conclusions about the technology until we get experts. So let's potentially bring some experts into the city, but let's not overreact. I understand that there are always, you know, folks and people who are concerned, but I think we ought to be, you know, basing those concerns on the, the scientific evidence. The scientific evidence, the studies, that's why the FCC is there, is to, is to certify a safe, which they've done repeatedly for 5G towers. So I think it's important that we, you know, defer to the experts on this. Thank you.
Thanks, council member. And I, I think you make a good point, in whether that's done through a study session or a presentation to a council subcommittee, or info memos, or all the above, I, I think it would be a wise thing for us to do. Okay, and back around to Councilor Dewan.
Thank you, and, and I hear Councilmember Cohen, and it makes sense, but I, I like to defer this until we have that community engagement, so that way, you know, the community hear from our staff and from the expert to, to understand this is no harm to, to their health.
Let me just ask, I, I want to clarify if that's a motion, but let me just, before you make it, ask, Chris, quickly, are there any concerns, legal, practical, you know, or otherwise, that, with deferring?
Sorry, I would actually have to look at that. I don't have that information right in front of me. I know there are some timeline constraints. I don't know where we're sitting with this particular application, so I'd have to come back to you on that one.
Okay. All right, well, let me, because for Dewan, since she's still on the floor, is that a motion you're making?
Yes, it is a motion I'm making.
Okay.
To defer until we have the community engagement.
I'm happy to second.
Okay, it was a motion on the floor. It would be helpful to know if there are any impacts of that, but I understand we're sort of doing this on the fly here. I know we have relationships with cell providers who also, you know, contribute to our efforts to close the digital divide. I don't know if there are other legal or practical considerations, but, Chris, I guess a question is, how quickly could a meeting be held with the community? the question is, how quickly could a meeting be held with the community and, and have this come back to council?
And again, I think it depends to some extent what council direction is. Obviously, typically through a development permit process, we would notice a community meeting if it's just as a sort of a check-in to sort of have a discussion with those community meetings that have expressed interest through the petition that they've submitted. You know, we can turn that around relatively quickly, but if it's a request to do a full-blown community meeting, that'll delay us.
Yeah. Well, let me ask the maker of the motion, since we are doing this on the fly, we don't really know the impacts. We do approve, as you pointed out, thousands of permit requests a year. Councilor Dwan, would you, would you be amenable to the more efficient process of focusing on those who signed a petition, those who have reached out to your office, that you can put it out broadly to the community, but not requiring staff to go do a mailer again to everyone? Is that possible?
Yes, I would.
Yes, that is a, a good solution to the 75 petitioners. So, that way, they, they can get the information needed.
At least they can be heard and, yeah, and the department can bring in whatever expertise they have available. Okay. Is that okay with the seconder?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. All right. There's a motion on the floor. Let me turn to Councilor Foley.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just going to ask the same question I did when we postponed the last item, and that is, what do we expect to happen with this deferral? I understand meeting with the community, but do we expect the, the information will come back differently than we have now? Or what, what is your anticipation that will come out of the community meeting, councilmember? I'm just trying to get a sense of where we go.
I, I just want to make sure our community have that community outreach from our staff to address all their concern prior. They can rescind their petition or they, they learn some new information, then we can move forward representing our community.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, Chris, sounds like you, you would work with the District 7 council office to engage everyone who signed the petition and others who are interested in the neighborhood to hold a community meeting before coming back to the council for approval?
Yes, that's correct. I think it would be helpful to understand when council expects this back.
After the community meeting. I think sooner, I mean, like, in general, I think we want to move quick to get our business done, but we also want to bring the community along with us and, in this case, with a lot of concerned neighbors. And I, I mean, I think this is relevant to the broader conversation about our community engagement policies, given the high volume of approvals you have to process. I think having a more uniform approach is preferable to what we're doing today. I don't love this, but I think in this case, given the obvious concern and all the signers of the petition, that there was no community meeting, I think that's the motion on the floor. And you can hold that meeting as fast as you want and bring it back to council with an update on what you heard. That's my, understanding of the motion at least. Not saying I love it, but that's where we are. Okay. I don't see any other hands?
I have several cards.
Yes, we're, that's right. We're on a land use consent, so we have a motion. Let's go to public comment.
I'm going to call the speaker names. When you hear your name, just get up and come to the microphone. You do not have to speak in the order that you're called. First person in the microphone gets to go first. For the councilmembers, we may have some people who will be using the wordly interpretation and you can see the interpretation on screen two. Khan, I can't read the first name, but it looks like the last name is Dust Dieter. So, I have Khan, Dust Dieter, Lynn, Alan Deng, if you can come on down. Go ahead.
Okay. Do I speak now?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Khan Tran, and I have a concern. We would like to know if the AT&amp;T did a survey on our neighbor before planning to build this 55-foot tower. Does the AT&amp;T know the neighborhood, the resident who live there? Because they are planning to build this six, 55-foot cell tower right next to our family daycare center, 60 feet away from the tower. That's not very far. Imagine where you're sitting and 60 feet away from it. And we have children from 2.5 to 5 years old who comes for 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. every day for service. And we also have elders and we also have people who are bed-bound within a few houses away from this 60 feet. So, we have residents who live there for a long, long time, who have kids, and, you know, we're not planning to move anywhere. Our daycare center has been there for many, many years. So, we would like to know because of the close proximity and the health concern, priority is safety, 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 and also the development of our center. That is our big concern, so I will pass the micro to the next speaker.
Next speaker.
Hello there, councilmembers. My name is Garob Dastir. I'm a resident that's also within about 70 feet of the cell tower development. So, the big issue that we're having here is that this is now the second time that we're having a development of this kind in this neighborhood where we, we have no idea until one day, right outside our yard, we have a sign, this development is going to happen here. This is all the information that we're given. And last time, we didn't even have the means to come to a council meeting like this. So, none of our concerns were addressed at any point and we had a gigantic storage unit which caused a lot of disruption with construction, fence damage, many things that we dealt with. And this is going to happen again now with AT&amp;T building this tower here. We don't know what are the construction benefits that are going to come towards us, what, how are we going to be affected as a community with any form of new construction? And we, as taxpayers, we need to know what's going on in our community. If we're just tagged up with, okay, this new development's going to happen and it's going to happen here and we have no idea that this is going to happen, how as a community are we going to be able to do anything? We, we want our opinions heard and our voices reasoned with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Tian Nguyen. Mai, Mai Jai Nguyen? Go ahead.
Greetings, councilmembers and Mr. Mayor. I have a more personal story. I moved into this neighborhood around 2002. At the time, there was an empty lot right behind me and there were three humongous radio towers. And there were no other, other developments yet. So, we lived there. So, two years later, I had my third child, who, to our shock, had a lot of birth defects with the diagnosis, waters. It rhymes with waters if you're interested in knowing what it is. Anyways, for the next several years, we had to go through a nightmare of hospitalizations for my, my son. And he's 20 years old now, but still is, you know, has repercussions from that. And so, I am moved because right next door to us is a daycare with children. And it brings back, so I want to protect these children from any possible health effects. And you mentioned the FCC. Well, the FCC only measures in RF the, the ability to heat up water, that's it, around that, that area. I'm not a very, I'm not an engineer myself, so I don't know all the, so, so the FCC is outdated in their research. So, there is the World Health Organization and other organizations that have other research that shows the health effects to children, that affects their, their brain. I'm not going to go into all of that, but I, I, sorry, I, I get emotional still because, anyways, so I...
Thank you. That's your time? No. Next speaker? I can't. Everybody gets two minutes.
I will note, you can email our offices and find us on the city website. Go ahead, sir. Come on down.
Yeah. This is the mayor and, and my city council. If the cell phone tower built next to my house, so in future, our, our house will, the prior will go down. So, so that's it. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Luang Dhuang, Hao Guiang. And I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your names. And it looks like Haile Dhuang. Go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm here to support the petition against the AT&amp;T tower. In my opinion, if installed, the tower would be too close to the family childcare, which the previous speakers talked about. It's just over the fence from the power, from the tower, and that would affect negatively the health of the children as well as the elderly nuns operating the childcare. Secondly, my family has AT&amp;T for cellphone and we never had any problems in terms of reception or signals or anything. So, I don't think we need the tower. And lastly, I want to ask all of you this question. Would you allow such a tower next to your own house, next to your family, your children? I wouldn't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Tian Nguyen. I live in the neighborhood that, with our neighbor there. I did emphasize the health risk associated with the imposed wireless emission, even though the FCC said that is safety for the electromagnetic radiation there. But I think that a study has shown that if, even though low level of radiation can damage your health, brain tumor, cancer, and can affect, you know, women abortion, genetic mutation, memory loss, et cetera, and also is affect the pacemaker. My wife has a pacemaker. The radiation, the radio frequency can interfere the pacemaker. And we plan to live there for a long time. We retire there, our kids will live there, our grandkid will live there, that the long-term affects. So, my question, do AT&amp;T, whether AT&amp;T responsible for our families or our neighbor family, our family health or our neighbor health? Will city responsible for that or both AT&amp;T and our cities, of some of their responsible for the health of our family health? And the long-term effect of that because, you know, our kid can be affected. So, and again, maybe don't use us as an experiment for the radiation. We can put it away, away from residential area, like, you know, commercial area, for example, not a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, mayor and councilor. And my name, Mai Tian Nguyen. I live in 1602 Camarina Place and about 100 feet from the tower center we built. And today I come here, I would like, if AT&amp;T think about try more than build the tower center. AT&amp;T can build it on the street, it far a little bit from our house. And the reason I came, took off to then come over and I would like to have measure and councilor and then Luang, and we have heard about the tower center. I put all my hope in everybody hand to have heard today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm, I'd also like to call the last two cards. I have Daniel Costa and Eric Lentz. You can come on down as well.
My house is the closest point to the cell tower, very, very losing. And I have junior and children, family daycare, and cell, cell tower, damage brain for children and older. I, I very scared. That's, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. I'm Christopher and I'm a, a member of the Arena Hotel. You know, I met with you guys off and on throughout this past year. I just, I just came down here to ask you a couple of questions.
Sir, I just want to make sure you're specifically talking about the cell tower that's proposed in this neighborhood. Okay? You're going to have to wait for, for public.
I thought it was in.
You're going to have to wait for open forum. I'm, I'm very sorry. Were there any other speakers on the cell tower in this neighborhood?
I've called all the cards.
Okay.
So, if, if you submitted a card and didn't hear your name, come on up, because I did mispronounce a few names.
Okay. Specifically for the land use consent item 10.1A.
Good afternoon. My name's Daniel Costa. I have a spratty date of one year. I'm ring clean with no in-between. And I'm here about the tower also. The great thing about this council in the city is anybody can walk through that door not knowing what the agenda is, sit down. And the one thing you can count on is that the council is going to consider what's harmful, such as the towers, to kids and others. And right now, we have a lot of that going on in the city. We have a big epidemic of people addicted to the streets. And you guys are concerned about that. And I want to thank you, Mayor Mahan, for all the work you've done and Mr. Don for connecting with you. But this is a good example of just how you guys are living up to what you share and that is, taking in consideration the good of society and this community. And I just wanted to thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for the hard work you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Eric Lentz. I represent AT&amp;T in this application, so I just want to make a couple.
Yeah, and if you're speaking on behalf of the applicant, you're actually entitled to five minutes, as I understand it. And we probably should have had you speak first. I apologize. I didn't realize you were here. So, Tony, let's please set the timer for five minutes as the applicant. Is that correct? You're representing the applicant?
Yes.
There's nobody else speaking on behalf of the applicant?
There's one other person, but we can share, we can share time as well if needed.
Okay. That's fine. If you guys want to share your five minutes, that would be great.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, Eric Lentz, representing AT&amp;T in this application, just want to clarify a few things. One, the noticing, we, as one of the speakers had, had noted, we noticed the property surrounding it on May 14th. We didn't get notification or, or the, a letter from the community until the day before the Planning Commission hearing. So, there would have been no time to schedule a community meeting with, you know, according to Brown Act, in, in one day. And so, from that, and after that Planning Commission meeting, we did have a, quite a lengthy conversation with James Tong, who actually wrote the petition, in the lobby out here for about 45 minutes. And so, and I'd also want to add to that we have David Wachowski with us, who is our RF expert, who also had a conversation with the, the petitioners two weeks ago. I just want to make, make, make that clear. And just sort of, you know, if, if there's any questions for me, I'm, as far as site locations, why we chose this site, I'd be more than happy to answer those questions just in short. And just sort of, you know, if, if there's any questions for me, I'm, as far as site locations, why we chose this site, I'd be more than happy to answer those questions. Just in short, AT&amp;T doesn't build cell towers because they just want to build cell towers. They build them because there's a need, and they're by law bound to FCC to deploy their technology. This site is not just for AT&amp;T customers. It also has nationwide FirstNet, which is a first responder communication service that's in which the county of Santa Clara is a subscriber. So think of an emergency, towers go down. Emergency personnel will have service through FirstNet. That's, that's, that's what AT&amp;T offers. So, and, you know, over 80% of homes don't have landlines anymore. So not just 911 services, emergency personnel, but just, just people communicating at home. It's not just at home, too. It's, think, think driverless cars. Go to San Francisco for a day and you'll see Waymo. My, my car uses AT&amp;T. I live in San Jose. I'm in Communication Hill. There's plenty of cell towers on Communication Hill. Hence the name. So I'm a member of this community as well. I see cell towers all the time in the city. Most of them you will not see because they're on rooftops or screened behind FRP screening. In San Jose, it's very simple to get a permit over the counter on a rooftop. You could be next to, the, the rule is 30 feet from residential. And the reason why we're here today is because we're doing a cellphone tower that is visible as a separate structure on a property that's light industrial with a planned development. So that's all I have. But we do have Dave Wachowski here. If he, if you have any questions specifically to RF emissions or FCC rules, we'd be happy to answer this question for you.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll note for the record, the city also uses FirstNet. David, there's still two minutes on the clock. Did you want to add anything, or should we just move to questions?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm David Wachowski. I am an electrical engineer, University of California. I am also a senior member of the IEEE. And specifically related to this topic, I serve on the IEEE International Committee on Electromagnetic Safety. That committee produces the C-95 standard from which governments around the world, including the FCC, derive their safety guidance. So I'm well familiar with the IEEE and the FCC's guidelines on, on this topic. This electromagnetic engineering report, which was submitted as part of the application, was produced by EBI Consulting. I was retained to do third-party analysis of that report. It was stamped by Michael McGuire of EBI. I found no reason to question the results. The levels on the ground are 19% of the public maximum permissible exposure, which is well within the FCC's guidelines for safety. There is a significant margin of safety. So there is actually 80% or 81% below the level at which a concern would be raised. Specifically related to that, somebody mentioned earlier about how the standards have not been updated. In fact, the Federal Communications Commission recently issued in 2021, an update to their standards. It was based upon the 2019 issuance of our C-95 standard. This is actually a topic that we address on an ongoing basis. And as we go through about every 10 years and update that, we do take into account all of the available evidence. There are over 250 members of the group that I work with from countries around the world. And we look at this, and then we issue our standard, which then is reviewed by the Federal Communications Commission. They then adopt it. So just wanted to correct that for the record, that in fact, the standards have been updated as recently as 2021. And I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that. All right. So we already had a bit of discussion at the council, but we'll go ahead and give folks an opportunity if there are any further questions before we vote on the motion. Councilor Dwan?
Thank you, mayor. I do have a few questions for you, which please come on down. So since you're an electrical engineer, can you elaborate a little bit more about the RF energy that has effect or no effect upon pregnancy or any other health? Problems?
So the question of electromagnetic safety is something that has been studied since the late 1950s. It, in fact, concerns about radio emissions date back well into World War II. This is something that is, there are probably about 10,000 studies that have been done on this topic. Over the years, many people have set forth theories about possible effects. And they've published papers inferring that they may or may not have found an effect. The basis of good science is reproducibility. So if a person publishes a study that says, well, I found an effect on birth defects, then that has to then be replicated by other scientists in order for it to be actually valid. To date, the only effect that the community finds, and this is after many, many thousands of studies, is heating. And that's a well-known effect from electromagnetic energy. We, we experience that every day when we walk outside into the sun. We feel the sun coming down. Light is electromagnetic energy. It warms up your body. Just as if you stood close to a RF source, you would warm up. You would feel warm from that. The biggest exposure besides the sun in your daily life is your cellphone. Besides that, it's your, it's your Wi-Fi access point, as council member Cohen noted. Cell towers that are even 60, 70 feet away from a residence do not contribute to that level. So if we want to reduce our exposure to RF, we should get rid of our cellphones. We should turn off our Wi-Fi access points. That's the biggest thing that you can do to protect yourself if you have concerns.
Is there any concern about pacemaker?
Pacemakers are designed to work in RF environments, and the IEEE C-95 standard takes into account that margin at which an effect would occur on, on devices. And there's a 98% safety margin. And then this site is 19% under that level of concern.
And regarding possible mutation of genetic, is, is there any study?
Electromagnetic, RF energy is not capable of breaking electromagnetic or breaking molecular bonds in what processes is known as ionization. Ionizing radiation can break molecular bonds, but that takes energy that is very, very high in frequency. We know this, for example, because if you get a sunburn from ultraviolet light, that is actually damaging your DNA. But that frequency is much, much higher than where these towers are operating. Below that level of ultraviolet light, there is no possibility that electrom, that an electron can be knocked off of an atom or a molecule. Ergo, it does not produce DNA damage.
Isn't it, I believe the smoke detector use some type of ionization to detect?
Smoke detector, yes, that's true, council member. The smoke detectors use a radioactive element. But that's a, that's a particulate device that actually works on alpha radiation. It's very, very different from what we're describing here.
Right. And are you available for the community meeting with our staff and our residents?
If they wish to me to be there, that would be fine. Also, many of you know me from my role at Joint Venture Silicon Valley. I'm not here representing them today, but we do do council study sessions as well. If you would like, reach out to Russ and ask him, and I'm happy to be there.
Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, David. I think we very well may be reaching out. Okay, I don't see other hands. Thank you, David. You may get called back up, but for now, I'm not seeing any other hands. Councilor Dwan, one final request on your motion. So this again will be a motion to defer. If you could make it date certain, I'm told that would actually be useful to staff. Staff will move expeditiously to get that community meeting set up in consultation with your office. But if we could make it date certain for maybe September 24th, would that, would that work? I'm seeing Chris nod his head.
Yes, I move to September 24th.
Okay, thank you. Is that okay with you, Councilor Ortiz? So we're date certain for a month from now?
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, I think we've exhausted everyone's questions for today. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes six, four, with Jimenez, Cohen, Davis, and Foley voting no.
Okay, let's keep going. Thank you, Chris. Thank you all. We are on to the regular agenda. And we'll start with item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, mayor. Do not have a report today.
Okay, great. We are on to our final two agendized items today. Those are items 3.4 and 5. We will have a joint 10-minute or so presentation from staff, and then we will vote on these items separately. As staff comes down, I'll just give some introductory remarks because I have the privilege of working closely with our IGR team to advocate for city-approved priorities in Sacramento and Washington. Just want to note, it's been a, been a challenging year for intergovernmental relations for a whole sort of, a whole set of reasons, especially related to budget. And I, that being said, we've gotten some really important things done this year. Just to note a few, working with our IGR team in the city manager's office and staff consultants out in DC and Sacramento. We were able to help bring home billions of dollars in funding for BART to Silicon Valley. We worked with our partners in the Big City Mayor's Coalition to maintain a billion dollars in HAP funding that will allow us to continue to shelter our most vulnerable residents and reduce impacts on the broader community. We supported key legislation passed this year, including SB 969, which creates entertainment districts that we think create a lot of opportunities for the recovery of our downtown core and will help small businesses. With our advocacy, AB 1395, a key bill sponsored by Senator Becker that facilitates interim shelter, is passed both houses and is now going on to the governor's desk, and, and, and much more. I want to thank Ryan Coonerty and Alejandra Lenas Chantres on my team, who worked very closely with Sarah Sarate, Zane, and the rest of the team, including, I see Steve Cruz here, and, and Stephanie Estrado with Cruz Strategies. And then, of course, our partners at Holland and Knight, Leslie Polner, Evo Tool, and, and others on the team. So it's been a great team effort. We're grateful for their expertise. And it's been my pleasure to help advocate on behalf of the city when we've gone on advocacy trips. Couple of things I'll just note. Despite these successes, we have some challenges ahead that I just want to highlight for the council. SB 549, 549, threatens hundreds of jobs and millions of dollars in revenue to the city by opening our local voter-approved card rooms to legal attack. That's something we have to keep top of mind. I'll have a question or two on that. And then we had two really promising bills unfortunately die in committee this year that would have, actually, there were a number, but two I'll just highlight, would have supported the creation of more affordable forms of home ownership. On average, the entire state of California these days is only building about 3,000 condos, which are one of the, the most accessible forms of home ownership in the state. And I look forward to bringing back our efforts to address the rising costs of insurance and other barriers to building condos in the state of California. So we hope to bring these back next year as a key element in our legislative program. The staff recommendation you'll see today recommends support for propositions 3, 4, and 5. I support those measures and staff's more general focus on initiatives that directly impact our city. So thank you again to our IGR team and our political consultants who are helping us, our legislative consultants, I should say, who are helping us advocate for the needs of our residents in Sacramento and Washington. With that, I'll turn it over to the staff report.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members, and members of the public. My name is Zane Barnes, and I'm the acting director for the Office of Administration Policy and Intergovernmental Relations. I'm joined today by our Intergovernmental Relations Team, including Steve Stamos and Nicholas Ochoa, and our state lobbying partner, Steve Cruz from Cruz Strategies. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Ryan Coonerty and Mackenzie Mossing in the mayor's office for their partnership in this work. We're excited to present our 2024 Summer Report, covering IGR activities from April through July. And following city council direction from 2022, we will also provide a presentation on the November 2024 statewide ballot measures and providing recommendations for city council to take a position where there's a very, a very direct impact to the city of San Jose or there is previous city council direction. As a refresher, our work is focused and guided by the city's legislative priorities, which were approved by council in November 2023. With there being so much volume and activity at the regional, state, and federal levels, these priorities help us organize our, to drive results in these key five, in these five key areas. We will review these priorities in our fall report and propose updates to council to consider. Since April, the internal, with internal and external teams, $8.5 million in transportation funding was brought to the city. During this period, we monitored over 350 bills, the vast majority at the state level. Accordingly, we issued 2, 120 advocacy letters advancing the city's priorities. We are sponsoring one bill this session, which we will highlight later in this presentation. And since April, we have made three designated advocacy trips to Sacramento to vocalize the city's interests in addition to other focused trips on specific legislation. We'll start by providing a brief overview of recent developments at the federal and state levels, including a quick review of some of the city's priority bills and an update on our advocacy efforts. The bills we discussed today are only a snapshot. A more extensive list of city positions can be found in the federal and state legislative logs, which are in attachments A and B to the memo. The federal government must, must pass a budget by September 30th to avoid a government shutdown. And given, given that Congress is on recess until September 9th and has, and had a late start to the FY 2025 budget process, we are expecting a short-term continuing resolution to be necessary. The House has completed markup of the 12 of the appropriations bills, while the, while the Senate has completed 11 of the 12 bills in markup. We submitted five earmark requests that were included in the T-HUD bill, appropriations bill totaling $5.5 million. This includes $2 million for Alum Rock Business Quarter revitalization, $2 million for Cahill and Park upgrades, $1 million for the Yerba Buena Bridge reconstruction, and $250,000 each for a sideshow and street racing deterrence program, as well as the Happy Hollow microgrid project. In terms of federal advocacy, IGR has been very active and involved on a range of issues. We work closely with Valley Transportation Authority in securing $5.1 billion for BART to Silicon Valley Phase 2. IGR engaged in substantial advocacy in partnership with VTA at the federal, state, and local levels. We worked with the city's Department of Transportation to secure $8.5 million in, in the Safe Streets and Roads for All grant funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation for automated speed enforcement funding, as authorized in AB 645, signed into law last year at the state level. We also worked with several city departments on pending federal grants, including two for the U.S. Department of Transportation Smart Grant and a joint application with Silicon Valley Clean Energy for an electric vehicle charging infrastructure program. Further, we will continue to advocate alongside VTA to secure a full funding grant agreement for, for the BART project by next summer. We'll continue to engage with our congressional delegation for funding for the Affordable Connectivity Program, which lapsed in April. And we will, we have set up meetings, recurring meetings to the Bay Area Host Committee to coordinate funding and logistical requests for the upcoming 2026 FIFA World Cup, where matches will be held at Levi Stadium. The five-year reauthorization for the Federal Aviation Administration was signed in May by President Biden. One notable aspect of the inclusion was the inclusion of five new flight routes to Reagan-Washington National Airport. Spirit Airlines has submitted an application to add a new direct flight from San Jose, and we have coordinated a, a letter of support from our congressional delegation. Next, the reauthorization of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act is also underway and funds, and funds workforce development programs nationally. Department staff have identified some concerns with the version introduced by the House, and we submitted a letter outlining those concerns to our delegation. Finally, we submitted a letter of support for the Mail Theft Act authorized, championed and authored by Congressman Panetta. And will, the bill would make mail theft a higher federal priority and dedicate additional resources to addressing it. On the state side, we'll, we'll provide updates on the adopted state budget and highlight IGR's funding advocacy and key legislation. The FY 2024, 2025 state budget addressed a $47 billion deficit through a variety of means, including spending cuts, funding shifts, and tapping reserves. Fortunately, the budget negotiations were able to avoid deep cuts, deep funding cuts to ongoing programs. Additionally, IGR advocated against the proposal to clawback earmark funding approved in the 2023, 2024 budget. This included $3.5 million secured by the city in 2023. Some programmatic budget highlights include $1 billion restored for the sixth round of the HAP program, $250 million for the middle mile broadband initiative, the preservation of $7 billion in funding across multiple programs for the expansion of behavioral health treatment services, and the restoration of $100 million to the Active Transportation Program in this year's budget and an additional $100 million in next year's budget. In terms of state advocacy, we proposed earmark projects to the state delegation for inclusion in this year's budget. However, no earmark, earmark projects were accepted statewide due to a significant deficit. We are also highly successful in our budget advocacy this year, especially as a leading voice among the big cities for the $1 million in HAP funding, as the governors may. voice among the big cities for the $1 million in HAP funding, as the governors may revise, included nothing for a sixth round of HAP. Additionally, we were successful in protecting an estimated $4 million in annual ERAF funding that comes to the city. The governor had proposed changing the ERAF calculation methodology to include charter schools, which would have allowed the state to take millions from cities and counties with excess ERAF, but would not have provided any additional funding to schools. On the legislative front, IGR was deeply engaged in two bills during the session. SB 549, which the mayor referenced by Senator Newman, was, has persevered despite our best advocacy efforts in partnership with the city's two card rooms and numerous other municipalities across the state. This bill could jeopardize up to $32 million in annual general fund revenue and is currently on the Assembly floor. Additionally, Senate Bill 1031 by Senator Weiner would have placed a regional transportation revenue measure on the 2024 ballot. This bill was pulled by the author's office following robust debate earlier regarding the funding framework. We anticipate this bill will be introduced early in the next legislative session, targeting the 2026 ballot. There have been over 2,000 bills introduced in the state legislature this year. This slide only provides a very quick snapshot of the highest priorities we have engaged on. IGR has been working on one city-sponsored bill, SB 969, authored by Senator Weiner, which would allow cities to establish entertainment zones. IGR has testified in support of this bill at two committee hearings. This bill is currently on the Assembly floor and is anticipated to reach the governor at the end of the week. Other key bills include two bills addressing retail theft, which we supported, AB 2943 and SB 982. These bills were signed into law on August 16th, as shown by the green, green outline, in addition to SB 1361, which would, which would exempt homelessness service providers from CEQA. We also supported AB 2583 addressing school speed limits. However, the bill has since died, as illustrated by the red outline. We'll engage with Assemblymember Berman to gauge interest in reintroducing this in the next session. Lastly, additional legislation that continues to progress include important bills on tenant protections, artificial intelligence, sustainable aviation fuel, and utility disconnections. We wanted to provide an update from the spring IGR report in April, where council provided direction for IGR to evaluate certain bills and adopt positions of support. On 12 of the bills that provided, that council provided direction on, IGR has issued letters of support on nine bills. Unfortunately, several bills of these have since died, as shown in red. However, one bill, SB 982, regarding retail theft, has since been signed, as shown in green. Following council direction, two of the bills were added under a monitor position, as shown on the bottom. And finally, council direct, provided direction to take a support if amended position on AB 3035 by Assemblymember Pellerin regarding farm worker housing. IGR worked with the author's office and bill sponsor, the County of Santa Clara, on proposing amendments were accepted and integrated into the bill. However, additional amendments were not taken. IGR continues to engage on the bill and is working with the County of Santa Clara on crafting a memorandum of understanding to address these outstanding issues identified by planning staff. We will now transition to addressing statewide ballot measures for the November 2024 election. There are 10 qualified state ballot measures for the November 5th election. Aligned with previous city council direction, the administration is recommending that the city take a support position on three of the ballot measures, which we'll go into further detail in just a moment. We're recommending that city council take a support position on Proposition Three. This action is aligned with this city, with the council-approved legislative program, and the council has previously provided direction. Prop Three would update the state constitution to enshrine the right of same-sex couples to marry in, in the California Constitution. Prop Three would remove language from the state constitution that defines marriage between a man and a woman. Prop Three is supported by Governor Newsom, the California Democratic Party, Equality California, among many other elected officials and organizations. We're also recommending that the council take a support position on Proposition Four. The council-adopted legislative program contains numerous provisions supporting increased infrastructure funding to support improvements of the city's aging infrastructure. Prop Four would authorize a $10 billion bond to fund climate resilience, resilience projects, the largest of which would be a $3.8 billion allotment for, for drinking water and water resilience programs. Remaining funding would be allocated for coastal resilience, clean air, parks and outdoor access, outdoor access, extreme mitigation, among other projects. Prop Four is supported by various groups, including the California Labor Federation, Clean Water Action, and the National Resources Defense Council. We're also recommending that the council take a position on Proposition Five. This is supported by the council-adopted legislative program, which contains a policy provision supporting reducing voter thresholds for infrastructure funding measures. Prop Five would lower the voter threshold from two-thirds to 55% to approve local general obligation bonds for affordable housing and public infrastructure projects. This action would align public infrastructure bonds with school bonds. Prop Five is supported by the California Democratic Party, the California Labor Federation, State Building and Construction's Trade Council of California, just to name a few. The administration is not providing a recommendation on seven ballot measures, but we wanted to provide additional information for your awareness. Proposition Two would authorize a $10 billion bond to fund new facilities and renovate existing facilities at school districts and community colleges. Proposition Six would amend the California Constitution to prohibit the state from punishing inmates with involuntary work assignments and from disciplining those who refuse to work. Proposition 32 would increase the state minimum wage from $16 an hour to $18 an hour for all employees by 2026. Proposition 33 would repeal the Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act of 1995. Proposition 34 would permanently allow California Medicaid program to pay pharmacies directly for prescription drugs. Proposition 35 would make permanent a 2023 tax agreement to stabilize Medicare's finances. And Proposition 36 would increase penalties for some drug and theft crimes by rolling back Proposition 47. This concludes our presentation. We're asking council to accept the summer IGR report and reaffirm the city positions in the federal and state legislative logs and take a support position on propositions three, four, and five. Thank you, and we're available for questions.
Great. Thank you for the comprehensive report and all the, all the good work you and the team do, Zane, with our, with our partners to represent the interests of our city in Sacramento and Washington. Tony, do we have public comment?
We have no cards.
Okay. Great. Let me just come back to the council here.
Move approval of item 3.4.
Second.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion of second on the floor. Thank you. And on to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to extend my gratitude to our dedicated IGR team for their unwavering commitment to representing our city at the regional, state, and federal levels. Thanks to your tireless effort, we've been, been able to effectively advocate throughout the legislative process and advance our city's interests in securing crucial resources for our residents. I'd like, I'd also like to thank the team for submitting the federal community project funding earmark for the Alum Rock Business Corridor revitalization project. This is vital funding that will play a significant role in the preservation and empowerment of local businesses and entities, fostering diverse investment opportunities and cultivating an environment that champions entrepreneurship and facilitates the generation of wealth throughout the corridor. Additionally, their support for SB 1193, which prohibits an airport from selling and distributing leaded aviation gasoline, has been especially crucial to my district. This bill is vital for addressing the impact of leaded fuel use at the Reed Hillview Airport on our historically disadvantaged community in Eastside San Jose. So by championing the bill, we're taking a proactive stance in addressing environmental justice issues and prioritizing the health and well-being of our residents. Finally, I just would like to, you know, provide some constructive feedback to IGR. It came to my attention by Assemblymember Gail Pellerin and Supervisor Adness that our IGR office participated in some lobbying to suggest amendments to AB 3035, which is fine, but what was surprising is both the offices said that IGR didn't reach out to the assembly member before lobbying to amend the bill. And so my understanding is you guys showed up to the hearing, working to request the amendments. And I think just making sure we build a best practice of collaboration and maintaining relationships and with local government entities should be like our North Star. And I just don't want to come to a place where, you know, we're asking the assembly member to support our city's interests, and she may have a bad taste in her mouth. So I mean, happy to hear your explanation of it, but that's just what the assembly member has communicated to me, as well as the supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think AB 3035 was a challenging one for us on a number of fronts, in order to provide the guardrails that we provide, that we got council direction on previously. We engaged with the, the county, the bill sponsor, I think, the afternoon of the IGR report in April, and they notified us that they had actually reached out to the bill author, Gail Peller, Assemblymember Pellerin. We also did additional engagement with her office directly and her staff. And then, before we actually spoke in committee to, to nudge on amendments. So we will continue to make sure that we're making the overtures to make sure that assembly member and bill sponsors are aware of our amendments, and so that we can have the most constructive relationships moving forward.
No, thank, thank you, Zane. I mean, like I said, you've supported me in all of my committee meetings, and you definitely have a wide breadth of knowledge on this topic. It just, the history of, you know, city versus county in, in this area, I just hope we could do everything we can to avoid unwanted, I guess, issues. But thank you so much.
Yeah. Councilmember, I just want to sort of highlight that we do a biweekly check-in with our county IGR colleagues to avoid these sort of issues popping up, and we'll continue to have those meetings to, to address coordination.
Thank you so much, Zane.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman Cohen?
I'll be very brief. I, I just want to take this opportunity, like I do every time, to thank you and team for the work we do. I'm, I'm grateful that we have such a great, strong IGR team advocating for our city's interests. And it's, as, as was mentioned by the mayor, it's been a challenging year. There's been a lot of very complicated things happening, a lot of state legislation, a lot of funding requests, which we've, which have mostly, which we've been very successful with, and also, you know, things that we're trying to fight off, like SB 549. And so I want to thank you and your team for your continued efforts, and I'm excited to accept the report.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Councilman Kondelis?
Thank you, Mayor. I too wanted to just thank the staff for your detailed report and your work, and how we often refer to as bringing home the bacon and bringing funding to San Jose. And it's important to applaud the engagement that was made across all levels of government to ultimately help uplift our community. I especially want to highlight the $1 million for the Yerba Buena Bridge that's moving forward in the federal appropriation bill. To provide a bit of background for my colleagues, city staff assessed the condition of the Yerba Buena Bridge and deemed it to be structurally compromised and closed it off to the community last year. The bridge is significant to this pedestrian corridor connecting the neighborhood to Evergreen Valley College and helping the students, as well as the residents, get safely across Yerba Buena Road. I've been working with several of our partners at every level of government to find funding to replace this, this community access, and that's why I'm excited to see the money is moving forward and hopefully leading a solution to, quote unquote, "fix our bridge," as it's belovedly known in, in my district. And I'd also like to publicly thank Congressman Jimmy Panetta for prioritizing this project in my district, as well as the community that will greatly benefit from these dollars. I know there's also some funding moving forward for sideshow mitigations that's going to help improve and hopefully prevent some of these donuts and illegal car activities that have been, you know, terrible to, to deal with. And so a lot of work remains to be done, but I appreciate the effort, and there's lots more work to be done. So, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate your advocacy for the bridge, Lake Cunningham, and, and other, other needs on our beautiful east side. Let's go to Councilman Batra.
There was a lot of things for you to watch this time on the state level and at the federal level. Thank you very much for doing that a great job. And I'm very pleased that we were able to work with Congressman Panetta on these earmarks. Now, these things have been proposed, the $5.5 million with, one with Congressman Kana, and the other ones are all with Congressman Panetta. Is it a given that when it goes, the budget gets approved, that these line items are automatically going to be in, or will the each line item be scrutinized at the next level yet?
Councilmember Batra, thank you for your question. The federal appropriations process is a complicated one. We, we caution everyone that this is just basically the first stop as it goes through an appropriations process. There may be further budget negotiations that decrease the amount of money available for, in the Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development Bill, which these earmarks are located in. But we'll continue to monitor, continue to do advocacy on these. But like I noted in the presentation, the, their, the Congress mandated to pass a budget by September 30th. We expect a short-term continuing resolution to take place. And similar to last year, I wouldn't be surprised if it was April or May before we actually have a budget passed. So we, we will keep close on this, but it is a long, a long process, and it's only gotten longer with a closely divided Congress.
Okay. Thank you very much. Try to keep that $2 million for the Cahill and Park in there, because that does need, all the seniors are waiting for getting their pickleball court. Okay? So, keep us updated as the progress made. Thank you very much for all the good work. You had to respond to that one in a very short time, particularly that line item. So thanks for the cooperation and the good work.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll continue to keep you updated if there's additional advocacy opportunities on the federal appropriations bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Foley?
Just a couple of things. Thank you for your report and your advocacy, both at the state and federal level, and your success in many areas, particularly in the funding cycles. I do want to give a shout out for Congressman Jimmy Panetta, because he was newly redistricted in to cover much of the city of San Jose, and clearly, by my colleagues' response and appreciation to him, he's listening to their needs and their, and he's writing in and approving some of the things that they've requested. So I think that's really wonderful, when we have a new congressman who takes on that level of interest in our, in our area. Turning to two local issues, really disappointed about SB 549. You know, I worked on that as well, and, and really disappointed that it's moving through Assembly, headed to the Senate. What can we do that has a serious implication on the city of San Jose, both as far as employment is concerned and as far as the dollars are concerned for income from the card rooms?
Thank you, Councilmember. As you probably have seen, we've done a lot of advocacy on a whole lot of levels on this one, from making sure that labor is now involved in, in opposing on this bill, to making sure that we're advocating when we have the mayor up in Sacramento, in addition to our close coordination with our card rooms on a monthly basis to align on advocacy efforts, and also, for the first time, conducting an advocacy day in partnership with them. So all those things have gone into place. The bill now stands to get a vote on the Assembly floor. I think that our estimation is that it will probably pass through the Assembly and move on to the Senate. I'm going to just defer to, to Steve Cruz about where it kind of can go in the process from there, but it will go to the Senate Rules Committee for determination of whether it will get a hearing in the Senate Government Organizational Committee or Senate Judiciary Committee, but we have some opportunities to hopefully stall it a little bit.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Zane. And Councilmember, for the question. So yes, as Zane said, it's on the Assembly floor, and of course, there are four days left of session. They're going to go through Saturday, and that's because there's a 72-hour rule for bills in print, and there are going to be amendments tomorrow, so that puts us out to Saturday. So it'll have to leave the Assembly. If it gets out of the Assembly, it'll move to the Senate. The belief is that there is a better opportunity in the Senate, not the same bill, but a bill that would have done a lot of harm to card rooms. This was a table expansion a few years ago, was held in the Senate Policy Committee, was in Senate Governmental Organization Committee chaired by Senator Dodd. He's still the chair of that committee. So I think there's optimism there. And then, what Zane was referring to is that potentially a double referral. It could also go to Senate Judiciary Committee because of the subject matter of, of the bill. And so we're hopeful and, you know, trying to work with leadership to, you know, hopefully slow it down. I do think, Zane made a point, and it's worth, I think, emphasizing, is they, the support, I think the difference between like that, this bill's been around for a couple of years now. The difference, I think, has been the engagement of, of the city, the council, the mayor, and then subsequently, the public employee unions. And so I think we've seen a change. It's sort of, you know, it was sort of floundering there for a bit. I think we were in the same spot. I think that gave us a little bit of a wind in our sails, to be honest, and there's firefighters. And so I think that's really sort of giving members some pause and giving them something to think about. So we're hopeful, we're going to continue to fight it, but we'll know the outcome by Saturday.
I just wanted to add, I wanted to also thank Councilmember Adness for going up to Sacramento to, to testify in opposition to this bill in the Assembly. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. I'll, I'll look forward to that going
I'll look forward to that going forward, or not going forward, actually. And anything that you need from me, if letter writing, phone calls, whatever, however I can help in advocating for a position, I'm happy to do so. The other one that I'm disappointed is dead, but maybe revived later, is AB 2583 Berman, and that's related to the school speed limits. Is, why did it die? What was the reasoning that it didn't move forward?
Thank you, Councilmember. The, all of the bills go through a House of origin as well as a second House suspense hearing. This is where there's, if there's a fiscal impact, they're evaluated by the Appropriations Committee. It's probably an unsavory answer, but we actually don't know why some bills actually get held. It kind of goes into a bit of a black box, and we're not really clear why AB 2583 was not successful. We are engaging with Assemblymember Berman's office to see if they have any additional intelligence as to why this didn't move forward, and also gauging his interests in reintroducing this in the next legislative session.
I'm very interested in pursuing that with Assemblymember Berman to discuss what his, possibly a new bill, will look like. I'd love it to see an effort to include local control on speed limits, particularly around school zones and other areas. Now, we don't have that flexibility, but the city actually has a better understanding of where our speed limits could be reduced than the state government does. So I'd love to, in some way, be involved with Assemblyman Berman. So if there's any way that we can connect over that issue, I'd be happy to, I'd be very interested in discussing that further.
Yes, Councilmember. We will look to engage with Councilmember, or Assemblymember Berman on this one. They're kind of busy in the legislative, at the end of the legislative session, so probably September, October, and we'll also touch base with you and follow up on opportunities to engage on that one.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman Dwan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, IGR team, for the report. You guys do an incredible job with the small amount of staff that you have. I'm just in awe. But yet, in 350 different items that we support and not support, there's some that I agree with, a lot of it I agree with, and a few items that I don't. Have you ever thought about having a community engagement once a year? Because we represent our constituent, so that way we can get their, you know, their support as well.
Councilmember, we have engaged stakeholders in the legislative process, our legislative program development on an annual basis. This usually consists of non-governmental organizations and other organizations, San Jose State and others, on our legislative program on an annual basis, and will continue to do that.
Thank you. Mayor, my understanding is the, we're voting on 3, 4, and 3, 5 separately?
Motion for the Speaker to move to 3.4. It's one to four. It's only to that. The next is one to five. That's correct. Are you going to move to 3.4 or is it just 3.4?
Got it. Thank you.
On 3.4, and then we'll come back to the council to take up 3.5. Okay, great. And then on to potential motion on 3.5, if we have one. This is the staff recommended positions on the three measures on the November ballot.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. We'll go to Councilmember Foley.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez, for jumping the gun and beating me to that, but that's fine. It's exactly where I was going to go. Particularly, a huge issue to me is Proposition 3, which is the constitutional amendment codifying gay marriage. Supreme Court has already said it's legal. The voters of the state of California have said it's legal, but it is not yet part of our Constitution, which leaves it open to be changed. So this approval will allow gay marriage to be embedded in the Constitution for all time, and I'm so excited for that. It's long overdue. I don't think we even realized that we needed to go to this step, but I'm really thrilled to be able to vote on this, yes, yet again, and vote yes, that members of the LGBT community should be allowed to marry. And with that, I will triple the vote, triple the motion.
Councilmember, just wanted to add, the reason that this is happening, as you may know, is with the Supreme Court potentially signaling reversals on some things that have been longstanding precedent, the California, the introducers of the proposition wanted to make it clear what's in the California Constitution.
Thank you. Yes, that's very important. That's why we're doing this, because we cannot know how the Supreme Court may reverse their prior decision. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilor. Councilman Dwan?
Thank you for fighting the Proposition 3. It's been too long and too far, especially in California. We should move forward with it. But I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we vote on all three propositions separately. I want to make sure that we make a very clear statement on Proposition 3 and also Proposition 4. I'd like to also have a choice in Proposition 5 versus voting all three together.
So you want to bifurcate, or is it a term to say trifurcate? You want to break these out into individual votes?
Yes.
Is that amenable to?
I'm okay with that.
Make of the motion? And who seconded? Vice Mayor? Okay.
Thank you.
Can we just remind folks, maybe we can put it back up on the screen, or Zane can just remind us of what each of the three are? And as we do that, I'll turn to Councilman Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. It sounds, if we're bifurcating, are we going to talk about them all at once? Or we talk about them all at the same time?
You talk about them all at once, and then my proposal here, if it's okay with the maker of the motions, we would vote on 3, 4, 5 in rapid succession.
Right. Yes. So I'm very enthusiastic to support propositions 3, 4, and 5. Proposition 3, obviously, is important for the reasons we just said. The California Constitution would revert to it being illegal in California if the Supreme Court overturned their previous ruling, so that's important. Proposition 4, obviously, very needed for our climate resiliency, which we, everyone knows is really important to all of us here in the city of San Jose and to me. Proposition 5 is really important to make sure we retain, we actually revert back to local control over funding decisions. The state constitution now prevents local voters, by a majority, from investing in their infrastructure. And we've had conversations here about parks, bonds, and other things that are very hard for the voters, even if we want them and the voters want them, to pass. And in the spirit of what we always, many folks in cities across the state talk about in terms of local control, I believe the best form of local democracy is to allow local voters to make these decisions by a majority, and allowing local voters to pass infrastructure bonds, infrastructure measures by a 55% majority, just like school districts are allowed to pass bonds by a 55% majority, I think is incredibly important and in line with our values. So I will be supporting both portions of the bifurcated motion.
Great. Thank you. Okay. And thank you to staff for putting it up on the screen, just in case anybody needs to clarify. We're on item 3.4. You'll see on the screen there. Proposition 3, marriage equality. Proposition 4, climate bond. Proposition 5, local government financing voter approval. And those are all recommended by staff for support, and that's what a yes vote would be doing, but we will vote on the council's position individually, starting with Prop 3. Do we have any other hands up? And Nora, sorry, did you want to interject?
It's 3.5. You said 3.5.
I apologize. For the record, we are on item 3.5. We just took up 3, 4. Thank you. So I don't see any other hands up. So Tony, let's vote first on the council's position on Proposition 3, and this is a motion to support.
Councilmember Torres is not here today, but I know that he would be voting unanimously for this proposition as well.
Let's make sure that's in the record. Good note. He certainly would. And I believe that was unanimous?
Unanimous.
Great. Okay. Let's now vote on council's position on Proposition 4. This is a motion to support.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. And then finally, we'll vote on the council's position on Proposition 5. It's a motion to support.
Motion passes eight to two, with Dwan and Abhatra voting no.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you to our team, IGR and Cruz Strategies, Hall and Knight, wherever you are, somewhere along somewhere. All right. And then just in case anybody is tuning in now, the council voted to defer item 3.6 for three weeks, so we are on to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any city business that was not on today's agenda. Tony, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, I have Christopher West and James Campbell.
Okay. We'll give folks another couple seconds to come down if they would like. I'm not seeing anyone move toward the podium.
Christopher? Christopher. He's asleep. He's asleep. And James is asleep.
Okay. Okay. Great. So again, open forum. Any city-relevant business that was not on today's agenda, come on down, and speakers have two minutes each. And whoever gets down first to the podium may go.
I'm not sure if I missed it, but I just wanted to make a comment on the three community centers, the youth, I forget which one they are, they're the, basically, the closure or the partnerships between the Neighborhood Association. I just want to basically go against that. I mean, the future of our youth is really important, and youth are being, they're being trafficked nowadays. Like, I'm not kidding. It's like, it's a problem, and I saw something, I've reported it to the hospitals, and they've done nothing about it. And it's like, it's a concern to me, because homelessness is becoming so much common, and it's just not fair to the community and it's the future generations, you know? Taking away education and community centers is not good for the future, so I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Once again, I'm Chris, and I'm a resident at the Arena Hotel. I've come here periodically throughout my past year. I spoke at some of the Community Advisory Committee meetings. It's been an interesting year, to say the least, but there seems to be just this problem with the operator, Home First. We were told that Home First is not in the business of kicking out residents for having a pet. You know, I have a resident who just recently got admitted back to our hotel after she was kicked out. Now she's scheduled to be kicked out again. I don't understand why. It feels like staff is picking on these two, these two individuals. I don't, I don't know why. But it's definitely brought me here to raise the awareness. That's about what's going on at the arena. You know, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to really ask what it's like being under the care of Home First. Sometimes it's scary when you go to buy the meal and you wonder if you're going to get food poisoning. Over 90% of us at the Arena Hotel have suffered food poisoning this past year. That's a lot. I know it's not 90% of the 1 million meals that Home First serves every year, because there would be a lot of sick people, so I think it's targeting just us. So you got about 20, 20 more seconds left. I just, I just hope that today you guys will give Home First a call and say, "Will you please stop trying to kick people out for having a pet? Stop trying to send them back out to the streets, because it's traumatizing to have to go through that process all over again." Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the council.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Thanks, everybody. We are adjourned. Have a great evening.